Okay, 8:532. I now call to order the regular CRA meeting of the town of Lake Placid here in the government center. I'd ask everyone to please make sure your phones are either off or on vibrate. And if you have comments, we'd ask you to please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then we'll go from there. But first, we're going to have our CRA meeting. We are pleased to have with us tonight Reverend Norris from the Trinity Lutheran Church, who will lead us in our prayer and our invocation, both for the CIA, CRA meeting, and our regular meeting. So if everybody would please stand.
Bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, as we stand in the shadow of yet another remembrance of 9/11, that horrific day that took so many lives, we pray that you will never let us forget that event, and bless all the families that were so tragically affected by it, not only that day, but all the years since then, where emergency service personnel spent days, weeks, months on that pile and are suffering from so many different things. We pray your blessing upon those families. We also ask your blessing upon our esteemed council and the CRA this evening, as they come together to deliberate and make important decisions concerning our nice town. We pray that their decisions may be guided by you, that will be pleasing in your sight, and also beneficial for all the citizens of our community that come together here tonight, as well as those that cannot be with us. Bless our emergency service personnel people, as they are serving and protecting us, and bless our schools, the teachers, the students, the staff, the administrator, and keep them from all harm and danger. And we pray all these things in your most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Norris. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay, we'll go into the consent agenda. Of course, number one is A and B.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda for the CRA meeting. One A and B.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in two seconds.
Do I hear a third?
Is there any other comments? Pull the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
And clerk, from now on, we do have royalty in the House. It's now, he is now known as Charles III.
I am Charles III, but not that.
Lake Placid has her own royalty. Okay, we'll go to number two. CRA funds for Dow Hall intersection. This is a cost sharing between us and Highlands County.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the town of Lake Placid CRA fund the cost sharing with Highlands County from the CRA budget, as the project area falls under the Lake Placid Community Real Development Plan parameters for a total of $13,475.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Saying none, we'll take it to the audience. Saying none, we'll bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
While we're on the CRA, are there any members of the community that would like anything that they have to offer to the town on this? Okay, thank you. We saying none? Number four, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Pull the council.
Oh, I apologize, I wasn't expecting the motion.
I know you weren't, I did it anyway.
You threw me off. So, first and second in that? That would be Hayes.
Mr. Sapp and Ms. Hayes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
CRA meeting is adjourned. I will now open the regular meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council, September 12, 2022, in the government center of town of Lake Placid. We have already done the pledge of allegiance, we've already done the roll call, so we'll go into the consent agenda, one, A through D.
Move to approve consent agenda, one, A through D.
Second.
We got a motion and second. Any comments? Saying none from the podium, we'll take it to the audience. Hearing none, bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, we do have consent agenda, two. Approval of all monthly bills by Royce Supply.
I move to approve consent agenda, two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments? Saying none from the podium, we'll take it to the audience. Hearing none, bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Abstain, that business belongs to a family member, I have filed the proper paperwork with the clerk.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, well, on number three, we have presentations and requests to speak. I do have one, if Mr. Ross would like to come to the podium. He is here representing the Lake Placid Golf Course, and I have a friend of mine who plays out there all the time, and he is very pleased of what's happened so far.
Well, that's why I'm here, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and citizens of the Lake Placid area. I just wanted to come and introduce myself. A long time ago, as growing up, my parents said never come to somebody's house without having something, which actually sounds like a Seinfeld episode, but I do have something that I'll leave you folks. So my name is Mitch Ross, I am the new general manager of the Lake Placid, or Placid Lakes Golf Course, or as you may know it as Country Club. My nephew is in the process of purchasing the golf course, and we are in the processes, process of bringing it back to life, and that was one of the reasons I came here. My background is not in golf, although I like to play it. I just retired from the Milwaukee Police Department after 21 years, specializing in active shooter training for churches, schools, and hospitals, and I will offer that service to anybody here, if you contact me. I'm actually very good at it. But besides that, for the last probably 15 years, I've had the honor of guarding the last four presidents, and as a dignitary protection officer for the Milwaukee Police Department, and I've worked in the Fusion Center, the Intelligence Fusion Center. So of course, what does that have to do with golf? Absolutely nothing. But my wife and I wanted to move to Florida, my nephew called and said, "I'm buying a golf course, how would you like to be the general manager?", and I said, "Sign me up." In the meantime, just a little bit, and I don't want to tie up this whole meeting, we are making improvements. The course is a great course, it's been here for a number of years, to my understanding. It's a great, what I would call track, or if you would call it a layout. I invite anybody to come out and play and try it, and see the improvements that we're making. We have a long way to go, but we are putting it on a fertilization program, and making some changes to the tee boxes, and just trying to improve the course, as again, it's, for lack of a better term, to me, it's tired, and we want to bring it back to life. The members here, I will offer you a year to play for free on us. So, I'm not sure who plays golf out of the group here, except for one that I know, that I'm familiar, familiar with. And so, how this comes about is I met Nell last week, and she said I should come here and speak, and tell everybody, pardon my French, who the hell I am and what's going on, since you're probably seeing me drive around here. So that's, that's me. I come from a very political background. My father worked for the Daily Machine, the original mayor, Mayor Daley, I'm originally from Chicago, so don't hold that against me. But other than that, that's who we are, so please stop on out. I can tell you a couple of facts, and please don't take this negatively. The golf course is not going to turn into a church, okay? Half the golf course is not turning into a zoo. These are just some of the rumors I've heard since I'm here the last six weeks. It will be a golf course, and as far as I know, the Mexican restaurant is staying, because everybody's worried about that, so. And the food is good, and I eat there all the time. Besides that, again, I'm going to put it out there, I don't have a business card for everybody, but my cellphone, I don't care, call me 24/7 if you have something to do about the golf course. If you're fighting with your spouses, things like that, domestic violence, don't call me, that's 911. But my cell is 414-378-0988, and if it has to do with the golf course, I'll take the call. My email is right now, it may change, but right now, it's Mitch, M-I-T-C-H, P as in Paul, L as in Lincoln, C as in Charles, C as in Charles, not that Charles, at AOL.com. I'll stick around, if anybody has any questions, you want to talk police stuff, I see there's a couple of officers here, I even have something for them. So, thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, sure. I'm not a golfer, so let's just share it with other folks.
All right.
Actually, the ball markers are collected, so.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
I'm not a golfer either.
Say it, give it to somebody. Take care of your ladies.
Thank you.
You guys are awesome.
All right, thank you. All right, this time, we'll go into the public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, sir, I'd like to make a motion that we move, that we move up item 6C2, the LaRue Planning Contract. I think Mr. LaRue's with us, and he has a couple hour drive home, if you don't, if the rest of the council doesn't mind taking up that issue first. 6C2.
Okay.
I, I just have a question before you even do that. It appears that we missed consent agenda, two?
No, we did it.
We did, too?
We did that, yes.
Yeah, we did it.
Okay, sorry, that was, it's been mine now. Thank you.
You're allowed. All right, if there's no objection, we'll go to 6C2. Mr. LaRue, if you'd like to come forward. And for those of you that maybe don't know Mr. LaRue, we have a long history with him. Many years ago, he was our, our town planner, and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again, hope to see you more often. Thank you. If there are any questions in terms of the contract, I'm certainly willing to answer them. We'll coordinate with the county and transfer things, so it'll be a smooth transition. And again, it'd be a pleasure to be able to work with a place that I know and love. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I might, for those in the audience, for the last, well, for a number of years now, Highlands County, we've been contracted with Highlands County to provide the services that we're now considering Mr. LaRue's firm taking over, and the county is unable to continue to do, to be in that agreement with us. So I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign a contractual agreement with LaRue Planning for his, for their services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comment from the podium? All right, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, saying none, bring it back, pull the council clerk, please.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Well, thank you, and I've always learned that when you receive an affirmative thing, be quiet and walk away, so. Thank you very much.
Watch the weather out there, it's pretty bad. Okay, we'll now go back up to number four, public hearings. First is second reading of ordinance 2022-13.
I move to approve on second reading, and adopt the ordinance 2022-13, raising the town's water and wastewater utility fees, charges and rates.
I'll second.
All right, let me go ahead and read it into the minutes. And ordinance number 2022-13, and ordinance of the town of Lake Placid, raising certain utility rates, amending and restating Article 2 and 3, Sections 135 through 200, through and including 135-307, of the town's Regional Utility Code, providing for severance and providing for an effective date. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments? Take it to the audience. Bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Next is 4B, first reading, 2022-14, village 2022-2023, and ordinance of the Town Council of Lake Placid, Florida, adopting the final leveling of ad valorem taxes for Lake Placid, Florida, for fiscal year 2022-2023, providing for an effective date.
And this is first reading?
Yes, sir, it is.
I move to approve on first reading, ordinance 2022-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further comments? Saying none from the podium, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, we'll bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Now, the second reading is next Monday.
Yeah, for both ad valorem and the budget.
Next is first reading, 2022-15, this is for the budget of 2022-2023, and ordinance of the Town Council of Lake, of the town of Lake Placid, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2022-2023, allowing for line item adjustments during the year as needed, and providing for an effective date.
I move to approve on first reading, 2022-15.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, saying none, we'll take it to the audience. Boy, you guys don't say much, do you? Bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll now go to 5A, Resolution 2022-12, adopting a non-ad valorem assessment And this is the Lake Placid Town Council establishing a tentative assessment rate in connection with non-ad valorem assessment for residential solid waste.
I move to approve Resolution 2022-12.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any further comments? Saying none, we'll take it to the audience. Bring it back, pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, where are we at? All right, I guess we go to 6C1, Lake Placid's interest in the 2.45 acre parcel, P-30-36-30- A11-0020-0000, this is the McKay property.
Lady, the owners of the property contacted me, I believe you have the email in the agenda package stating they had interest from another neighbor, and wanted to know if we had interest as stated in the email. You had given me authority to negotiate up to $300,000. Since we were so far apart, I did not make a counter offer of $300,000, I thought I'd bring it back to you guys, and, lady, to say what the marching orders are. My opinion is it would be really good and important thing to have, but there are limits on that. Talking with Joe, and Joe, you need to, I'm getting over into your business now, so I would encourage you to come up and comment. But my understanding is, we can operate the plant on the current site. We may have to pump treated water to another site to dispose of it, if the ponds don't rate for a million gallons a day, we don't know that answer. I thought they had been rated for a million gallons a day earlier.
They are.
They are? Thought you told me they were not, but, okay. So then we don't have any problem with the 1 million gallon per day system on-site, period, full stop?
Correct.
So the question is, in the future, we won't be able to produce, or to treat any more water, wastewater, on that site, and it would be helpful to have it all in one area for our operation and maintenance. This is the site, if you recall, that's got the great big hole in it. You can still, it looks to me like, and I think Joe agrees, correct me if I'm wrong, you can still get several ponds or infiltration, and you can still place other treatment elements, widgets, on that, so it can be used. You can also pump effluent treated or untreated to another site from here, so if the price of this one gets too crazy, a comparable price would be, say, if we found a place like, like, I'm not suggesting this behind Town Hall, five acres, spend a couple hundred grand on a pipe, and put it behind us, so you would have both the cost of the pipe and the land. So if it's $200,000 for each, $200 for the pipe, $200 for the land, then it takes $400,000 to get rid of your wastewater, if you're pumping it to a different infiltration pond. So, you're, you're not held hostage by any means. I think it would be a good thing to have. I have not really fine penciled an opinion as to what, how far you ought to go with this. I would be comfortable up to probably $400,000, $500,000, just because it would preserve a location for everything. I've not coordinated my statement just then with Joe, he may not want to spend that much of the utility money. I defer to Joe. There's on the spot, brother.
Yeah, I'll also ask for Kevin, or the utility director, to chime in, but I kind of agree with those in round numbers. And I would say that if any offers were made, it would be with the caveat that there is, you know, an engineering feasibility study done, to ensure that we can put ponds there. I don't want the town making any offers if we're not for sure we can use it. Just to elaborate a little bit on what Bert is saying, in some of the proposals you're going to see later tonight, there's already proposal to run a new effluent main, basically take some extra water from this site out to the Timoca site when it's abandoned. Those ponds were currently rated for about $200,000 gallons per day, so it would, you know, we could increase this plant capacity a little bit and be up to 1.2. You can do the same thing here, actually tee it off, because the main will be here, and use some property behind here as an option. So I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't feel like we're boxed in with finding some pond area at this point in time, now that we know we can do that, but I do agree with Bert, there is a price point there at which it might be more feasible to just put the ponds next to the site. And I think Bert's probably, I'm just, you know, taking our experience and, and thinking that's probably a closer, more reasonable price.
I would add two additional points. One, I think it's going to be a long time before, of course, I thought it was going to be a heck of a lot longer than this, when we built the 250,000 gallon plant, now we're going to a million. I believe that, looking at the numbers of, the densities and intensities in our long-term plan, it would be better to have a newer plant on the south end of town, when that area develops. We could, at that point, shift some of the load that's on this plant to the one south. For example, the Sun and Lake area, if we ever build that out, it would be just as easy to go south on 27 as it is to go north. So this one would be primarily for the Lake Placid area and north. The north is going to have a bunch sooner or later, as well, so, yeah, it'd be good to have land in the same spot. I think it would be important to have.
Yeah, and once again, you have an engineer and an attorney having differing opinions, because I, I think we would rather have a centralized plant, and treat as much as possible at that centralized plant, so that we're not, I mean, that's what we're trying to stop doing now, is running these multiple plants. We'd rather have it centralized, so that our staff can just take care of that. I'm not saying that we can't operate one down south, if the day arises, we need to do that, and we run out of room, but just operationally wise, I think, and Kevin, correct me if you have a differing opinion, we would prefer to just have a centralized plant, if possible. So, the, the scheme in which we send effluent elsewhere is still having us a centralized plant, we're just pumping the water to go into a pond somewhere else, but there's nobody that would have to be there to operate that portion.
I agree, a centralized plant is important. Joe, I've watched Joe struggle with plant operations for the past several years, and I did not realize how significant it is to get a plant that is, A, easy to operate with, with good operators, because it's hard for us to compete.
Is it possible for us to negotiate over the next few weeks, and bring a number to the next meeting?
Sure.
And then have this discussion, see if they'll agree on a number, because right now, it's so hypothetical, we don't know where we're going to end up. It's hard to pick a number, because it kind of lets them know where we are, and we don't know what that number is, anyway.
Well, if I might, we gave them a number. We, we authorized them to, to counter with up to $300,000, which was a very, per acre, very significant. I would be surprised if the property would appraise it that, you know, but.
I'm sure it will not, that's.
But it didn't get done. It didn't get done, he didn't put it in.
Well, I know, but I'm, my point is, as one council member, I have zero interest at the levels they're talking about. We've seen properties such as this sell recently, they're nowhere in that neighborhood. Our previous offer at little over $24,000 an acre is, to me, more than generous for that property, so, I mean, I'm going to be hard pressed to go above that.
I don't want to spite ourselves, though, by not having adjoining property down the road, and I doubt that's going to sell anytime soon, anyway, so it may be worth waiting and seeing, but. seeing, but-
Do you think we should go ahead and put that offer in?
Well, they didn't accept the 300, so-
We didn't put it in.
I did not counter with 300. I think he knows about it.
If that was a public number, I would think they know about that, and if they came back at 750-
I would think you might move to, my sense is the council is not going to pay 750.
No, that's outrageous.
So-
300 is, but if we can come to a number maybe closer to 300 that they would agree upon, it might be worth furthering the discussion. I hate to see you miss out on the property, because I understand running two plants takes a lot more people.
Well, right now, it's just the effluent issue, anyway, that we've got more capacity at other places, and it's not like we're going to be to a million gallons overnight.
Yeah.
So-
It will be in five years, though. We're going to hit that pretty quickly with projects we have planned, is that right?
Yeah.
Tap-in fees paid, you bet.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if all sewer project, I think it was 700,000 something, 800 bumping, if all the sewer projects we get come in, plus a camping conference center and some other things, so we'll be using three-quarters of it.
So, is the, is the motion that we made at the last meeting that didn't get put in at this time, do we need to redo it? Or are you still authorized to go ahead and put in that number of 300,000?
Unless the council votes, I think I'm still authorized to go 300,000.
Okay.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, your call, not mine. You know, it's hard to get into play, let's make a deal, from a public body standpoint. I tend to default toward the actual contract. He's not given us a written document signed saying, "I will sell you this land for X dollars." I can certainly go back to him and say, "To bring it to council, I need a signed document. When you write your number on it and your name, then they'll put theirs on." He'll probably come in at 750. You can vote to reject and counter at whatever you want to counter at, be it 3, 4, whatever.
So you would rather let him come to the table first, and then us counter?
Normally, what I have seen, the customary practice in dealing with an agency such as this, with multiple bosses and votes, for example, the Water District, the executive director will negotiate the best deal possible. At times, the executive director will even sign it, subject to council approval. We can go through that process and bring it back to you. I think I'm trying to determine what your appetite is, and that's hard to do in a public meeting. Normally, we'd get an appraisal. In my opinion, an appraisal in this case is virtually irrelevant, because it's such a special use for us. I don't care what other, respectfully, groves of so and so, they're not next to my sewer plant. Now, does that have a bearing on it? Yes. And if it's your business judgment, you'd like to get an appraisal? Absolutely, let's go get one.
But let me ask the question in a way, I mean, aren't we going to face obstacles if we're trying to buy property multiple times over the appraised value as a public entity?
Well, the town doesn't have to buy it, so if someone else comes up and wants to sell property, this is the way I see it, a one-time, one-piece of property deal. Are you saying that in the future, if somebody wants to sell his property, they'll try to get more out of us?
No, I'm just saying, I'm, I just, I can't imagine that, I could be wrong, that this property is going to appraise at the levels they're talking, and I thought for us, the utility as a public entity, that we were somewhat bound by dealing within appraised value limits. Is that not the case? I mean, can we pay two or three times what its appraised value is?
I was thinking appraised values are mostly for banks. If you're trying to get a loan, the value of the property really depends on the need for the property itself. It's hard to put a price on it from what the town needs it for. It's kind of a unique situation.
You know, you ask a question that is really one of degree, and I'd like to answer that next meeting, when we bring back something, and I'll tell you exactly your scope.
Yeah, I'd like to know what our ability is to pay beyond appraised value. I mean, my, very well be wrong, my impression is that we had, we have a hard time purchasing things above appraised value, that that's-
Well, interestingly, you can condemn and take, and that's going to come back on appraised value plus attorney fees.
Well-
And it may be that that would be the cheaper, better route to go, is condemn and take the one right next to it, rather than get the hole in the ground.
Yep, okay.
Does the council have appetite-
That's a more interesting approach. If they're going to be unreasonable, it's their property, they can do what they want to with it. I'm not opposed to that either.
No.
Okay. Until next month. Something to talk about when I visit with them again.
Or I would, I would say that if they really have a customer that's willing to give them $60,000 an acre for that property, I would wish them well, and we will see what development it brings, and enjoy having it be part of our town.
There you go.
Shake their hand and walk away.
And exit immediately.
Okay, so was that in the form of a motion?
But I don't think I was authorized to condemn, but to discuss condemnation.
I don't know that we've done anything yet. There's no motion on the table.
No motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the town staff and mayor to look at a variety of options for the three parcels that are adjacent to the town's wastewater facility.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second, another discussion. Take it to the audience. Bring her back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Satt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I think Mr. Gara was asking you what we just did. So he gets it right in the newspaper, hopefully.
He authorized staff to look into the three parcels adjacent to the-
Utility.
To the utility. Okay, we'll go to 6D1, the American Rescue Plan Act 2, and this is the payment update.
Mr. Mayor, myself and finance can speak to this issue. Councilman Royce wanted an update in regards to where we were at with the American Rescue Plan Act. The town, note the late entry attached, that the town has received the 1,241,616. We've received that total now. Of course, we have to hang on to it, by spending it the way the websites and the requirements are. As far as what we've expended already, we have purchased the garbage truck that's on the way. We, I think, I think I quoted you around $400,000 for the garbage truck that was eligible for this, these funds. It didn't cost us but $336,000. Then we have a generator that we have ordered. That's probably will be next year before we get that, but that's at $136,128. Total commitment is around $472,631. We have $768,985 available. I have, I can access the other pro, potential projects that I have given council in the past. If you want to consider projects, the, we can't go back past 2024, so some of these things we need to kind of get going.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the reason I ask the question is, is the answer that Mr. Williams just gave us, and that was, how much money did we have that was uncommitted that we had to expend in the next two years? And, to my way of thinking, there's, there's a couple, either we can go, not now, but we can go in a subsequent meeting down a list of potential projects, or, you know, or if we wanted to have one larger project that utilized all those funds, we could have a discussion, was this a time for us to make an investment in, you know, in one singular infrastructure project that this would cover most the cost of, such as a new law enforcement building, or something like that? So, I mean, it's really, but whatever it is, we, in the coming months, need to make plans on how to obligate and then expend this balance.
If council would like, I can prepare a better list of potential projects and bring it back to you the next meeting, and maybe you'll have a little bit better preparation. And in the meantime, if anybody's got any ideas, wants to share with me, I can kind of develop those up and-
Is the new police department building on your list already?
Is it what?
Is the new police department building on your list already?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Well, I think, hold on a minute.
This has to be spent in certain ways, is that right? Some things qualify and some things don't, so-
Right.
Would that qualify?
That does qualify.
That's, my understanding is something like that would qualify.
I think it will.
What you're looking at now is the potential list of projects. And this is, as staff ranked them, this is from a previous council meeting.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, there it is. The architect fees were $85,000, so, I mean, this, as far as the new police department, this would get everything going as far as that good direction, and probably make a good sizable payment, down payment on it, so.
I think it's something that we need to seriously consider getting started.
Good.
We have time.
I'll develop that idea more and bring it to your next council meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, we've already done 6D2. Now go to 6D3. No.
We did 6C2.
Yeah, we did 6C2.
We did 6-
No, we did 6D1. We'll now go to 6D2.
We're going to go to 6D2.
And that's the farmer's market discussion.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, we published a newspaper article. There were some concerns that not everybody had a chance to be heard, and in regard to this matter, and so we scheduled that we published a newspaper article and notified people a little bit better that we're around, that we're going to be affected by the, impacted by this. We did, we arranged a call-out, and we got some press coverage that we didn't even ask for. It was on the front page of the newspaper, I think it was. And I have endeavored to publish you the email comments. I committed that I would do that, to, you know, to let you know of the email comments, and there were some that come into the last minute, and obviously, I can't keep changing the council package, so I put a link to the addendum, and it goes to the comments, and in that is also a draft agreement from our legal department in regards to, and the emails are generally, you can read them yourself and everything, I mean, I'm not, my job is to make you aware of it, not to. There were several pros, and there were a few people that were disagreed with it, as with any thing that anybody does. But it has been well-published and well-presented to the public, and they've had a good chance to address it and let you know of their concerns. As far as staff concerns, these are the questions that, in your agenda package, that they made aware, that they questioned whether police are needed in some other areas, and that it will cost them, and I'll let them address that and bring to your attention what they would like to bring to your attention. And the town manager requested a formal okay from our legal, that they, their insurance coverage has represented us. They gave, they gave us like a 225-page document on insurance, but our risk management company, and I've got that included in the addendum, our risk management is looking for a document that names specifically the town. And I don't have that yet.
Can, can I just clear something up for just a second? I think there's been a little bit of confusion in the public that possibly the town council does not like the farmer's market, and I don't think that's our opinion at all. I don't, at least certainly, it's not mine. I don't think it is something that we don't agree that the farmer's market is a good tool for Lake Placid. Our discussion is, where should we locate it? And it's my understanding that we did not, at last meeting, decide to locate it by closing the street. It was an option. Am I correct?
I don't recall. I thought you were going to locate it on Main Avenue.
It was no decision that I could see, no clear decision, and I discussed it with Bert as well, that a decision was made to locate the farmer's market by closing the street. I think we can still look at other options, and I think what we approved was to look at what we would have to do to close the street. And in that vein, I would like to have people have an open mind for considering Stewart Park as a location, because it has several advantages. Number one, that it has parking. Number two, it has already restrooms. It has shade, a pavilion for music, and it is a successful venue site for other things like the Thalidian Festival. Now, I realize the location of it is a bit farther down from Journal Plaza, but I think it provides other options that we might want to consider, and it would not require closing a main street. If we did need to close the street, it would be a slightly-used side street, and maybe we wouldn't have to close it at all. But I think we should at least keep an open mind to another location that might suit all of our needs better.
I had mentioned to them another location, and the email that they came back to me with didn't really, as I understand it, they're here, they can speak for themselves, they didn't really care to consider another location than that.
I understood that as well, but I think we should.
Let me say, my recollection of the action we took was slightly different. I mean, I perceived that we had told them that if the details could be worked out, that we were willing to close North Main. Now, any action we take can certainly be changed, and I've met with them several times, but my impression is that we had told them that if we could come to a contractual agreement, and they could satisfy those, then, then we were willing to do that, but we're having to hear- But we're having it here in tonight, so.
I would add that if everyone agreed in that area, and I have had some contact with people in the area who didn't want to be named, who were not excited about doing this.
As did I. I think we all have. And, and some people that are very positive about doing it that way because nobody likes change.
They don't want to be a bad neighbor.
Utilizing an area unsuccessfully for a while and, and now it's become unavailable, you know that you want to try to keep as close to that area as possible. It's only human nature. But I think we need to look at, at specifics and the logistics of the area and see what really best suits the needs.
It, it's on the agenda mainly because they requested mediation by the town council with some of the things that I was telling them. So, it's, it's back to you because of that reason. And, and I don't want anybody getting the idea that the town administrator has a dog in the fight either because, because it's my job to present facts to you guys and to make sure that, that, you know, the town is covered by risk management and, and that, that's my job. So, I, whether it's closed or not, I'd be glad to make it work either way I'm instructed to do, so.
Can I give some thought on that issue of where we stand? If we did nothing tonight, there would be no road closure because we did not come to an agreement. I agree with Ray that our instruction to staff was figure out what it takes to get it done so we can, if we vote to, to move forward basically tonight. That's the reason I told Councilwoman Hayes, no, it's not a done deal. Tonight is the discussion of the conditions, if you will. Phil has made a list, I've made a list, that if the council wants to go forward, these are the things for the council to consider. So, tonight is a broad discussion. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me? Makes sense to you?
Sure, I mean, I'm.
You have an interest in this.
No, I mean, I.
You, you have blueberry patch, right?
No, I have no financial interest in this.
But your wife works there.
My, I, my, my spouse does work at one of the businesses that is interested in this, yes. But that's, I mean, I would say that's neither here nor there, I mean.
You want to go home tonight?
No, I, 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 as I'm sure Teresa will tell you, I mean, she and I and others have talked several times and I'm sure Teresa would tell you that I encouraged her multiple times to consider other locations and suggested that other locations were a better fit long-term. I just know that the business community of that area was very adamant that they wanted to have the farmer's market this year in that location. So, we moved down the road towards trying to accomplish that, have the right, have the right insurance. We're not going to do anything without the right insurance. I think we all agree with that. And making sure that, that everyone understood what the cost associated with a road closure, twenty-eight Saturdays in a row was going to be because, and in particular because of that location, it, the administration felt it was absolutely critical to have, you know, the police there to, to shut the road down and to open the road back up. And that has to be done by public officials. And so, there was, I mean, and, and I think I'm saying the same thing I told Teresa on several occasions. A lot of this ten-plus-thousand dollars was just the cost that we were gonna have to pass on, so. But, I mean, I'm, I, I, I have no, I want to, I want to see us try to accommodate Lake Placid's overall business community, including the folks at the north end of Maine, North Maine, to do what is helpful to the business community of Lake Placid, so. Did I represent yours and I's conversation accurately?
Yeah. Yes.
And I, and I have meetings with other business owners five or six weeks ago. I forget exactly when and I think I told them the same thing. And as Mr. Williams said, they were pretty adamant that they did not want to consider other locations, and so.
That's, that's the feedback I've gotten from them as well. But there, but other locations have said that they are not happy with the fact that the, that the street would be closed because it would be an inconvenience for their, their clients.
And, and, and I think at last month's thing, and I, I know I told Teresa this, I believe that long-term, whether, and obviously if they're gonna get started, they need to, they need to work something out and get started and make something happen in the next three to four weeks in order to be on their schedule. I think long-term, this type of issue is gonna come to us again and again and again. And we've already addressed it a little bit with food trucks. And I think that we need to, long-term, we need to, we need to think about designating an area and that's where, that's where people can have car shows. That's where people can have food truck rallies. That's where people can have, you know, car shows or those types of things. And so, I think places like Stewart Street and Park Street or those streets that are immediately adjacent to Stewart Park, long-term, would be a better fit. I'm personally, if they're willing to, if, if that business community up there is willing to, you know, cover the cost that the town would incur to do this, I'm willing to let them do it there for this season. But again, also, it's kind of a business decision in talking with Teresa. I mean, they've got to make a business decision as to what is economically feasible for them to do as well.
Well, if you're thinking long-term and people don't like to move anyway, let's put it in the right place first, once. Because I, I thought Stewart Park was built for that reason, to hold events such as that. Could be wrong.
I'm just one of four up here, one of five.
Me too. I'm just, I'm just one also. We, we just both one though.
Yeah.
I'll be one of four also. I'm with Nell on this. We have a location for it, it's set up for it. I'm not comfortable shutting down a town street for this. I've had complaints from neighbors further down Main Street to the south who say all their parking spots be taken up, people walking away from their business and tying up parking in front so the regular customers can't get in there. There are issues I wouldn't know how to address if this was happening. And right now, I'm, I would have to say Stewart Park's a better location for something like this. That was just one example. I've been given many over the last couple of weeks.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and let you.
Thank you. On a couple of different things, we have considered different areas all around the community. Those who say we are not open to other places don't really know the analysis and work that we've done on this. There are scientifically proven predictors for success in all businesses and farmer's markets do have those as well. There are innumerable studies showing that the importance of a farmer's market and its location to a retail hub, its ability to create an economic impact, the support from local businesses and municipalities and the community's support. We have to take into account walking distance, ease of access, traffic patterns, parking, access to utilities, shoppers who have multiple options to visit, and the ability for the community to spend time socializing in a safe and welcoming environment are all integral factors. We did take a lot of these into consideration. We did consider Devane Park. We did consider Stewart Park. We considered other properties throughout the area that have been offered to us. One of the, the big things that I want to really address is that when we started the farmer's market, there were four vendors and very little community support for it. We got in there and we're hoping to transform that, create something for the downtown that could ripple through the downtown. And I believe that we've been able to do that. The farmer's market is a big economic generator for the community. And I feel that through it, as it, as it continues, more and more businesses will come into the area and are supported by it. As of today, I know of twelve new businesses just since we took over the farmer's market several years ago. That's a big, that's a big improvement for Lake Placid. We didn't have that kind of thing. When we lived in Lake Placid several years ago, we didn't have a town that I would want to walk down and spend my money in and eat at a cafe or have a drink at a microbrewery. The fact that we started it at Journal Plaza and that has become a hub for our downtown does not mean that we're discounting the rest of the town. What it means is that we went to a location, other businesses came to that location after we were there and we're expanding. And taking and trying to move us into Stewart Park or try to move us to Devane Park or any of those areas, I will say the people on Inner Lake, I understand them saying that they want it or farther down on Main or the Historical Society or Devane Park or any of the other ones. I get it because they see the benefit that it has. But the benefit ripples through. As everybody comes through to get to the farmer's market, they're experiencing and seeing all the other businesses. They get to Window Shop or Walk Further Away, yes. But that'll give these other businesses an opportunity for people to walk back and forth across their properties or their businesses. I feel like, I understand so many people saying, you know, when you own a business, there's a thousand people that will tell you that your best option is this or that, but they don't understand your business. And so, what I've been trying to convey is our business is not a profitable business. We don't make, we don't make anything in the business. Literally, we have been spending our own money for years. But it was because it was the spirit of creating something for the community. When we first moved here, we didn't know how to meet people. We didn't know where people were. And being able to create the market, I feel like we've found our people. We've found our community and I feel connected to this place now. Moving it to Stewart Park, I understand. It is, it's a beautiful park. The issue in it is, one, if we're in the park, we're gonna tear it up. We're there every week and that's a lot of extra foot traffic. I understand why Ray is saying, okay, close off the roads. But those roads don't have the businesses that we can support and it's really an interrelated thing. We support those businesses, they support us. Without it, the plan doesn't really work. And when you try to move a business, like Ray and I, we talked the other day. You mentioned a business that was super successful in downtown and it decided to move to a different location. When it moved, it didn't work. It didn't work because the spirit of where it was at, the, the place where it was at, the community involvement of where it was at was just as important. And I think that's what we have to really come back to. If we can't do it there in the street, I think it is paramount for us and for the businesses. I mean, that's twelve businesses that are, really came into play because of that market. And the generation of, of income in the community is, is huge and it will ripple down. We are about collaborating with others. If I have an overflow of vendors that I can't put in something because they're a duplicate or there's too many of that, I'll flow them down to the Historical Society. I'll throw them, I'll flow them down to Inner Lake. I want to make the whole city come alive, not just one area. And I think a lot of people have, have, have said that I'm only about this or some profit or, or, and I've heard it and I've seen it written and it really, it really hurts, honestly, because the last thing I am is about my own self-profit in this regard. You can ask, I have a lot of vendors and people here that are supportive of us and they'll tell you, I, I don't, I put them first. So, I understand people being concerned. I would love to lay it with people. I would love to be able to talk to them, how we can collaborate, how we can create this better. And I think doing it in the street is the best way for us to move forward. I do know, I did have the paperwork from Ray's motion last week and it does say that the town would inform the county that they do not object to the petition to close one block of North Main. And then it does go on to say that it has to do with, we have to come at this meeting and talk about the terms. As far as terms, I do have a couple of concerns. It is, it is a lot of money. What we made last year in revenue collected was about twelve thousand dollars. What the town is asking us for is over ten. It doesn't really leave us anything to operate. And I personally, I don't have the money. It's, it's never been, I've put enough into it over the years. I just don't have anymore. I do know I have a lot of support from the businesses and I do know that a lot of them have told me, don't worry about it. We'll support you, we'll, we'll be there for you. I just don't think it's fair. I think that there's such a boon to our economy and to our town that it needs to be something that we all work together on too, instead of me or the businesses having to foot the bill for the whole thing. And I know Ray has said that there are other expenses that come into play and I am not opposed and I understand all of those things. But I feel like if we could do something where we do work together a little bit more on it. There are a lot of ways to maybe cover the police officer that needs to be on-site. There's community outreach that could happen where we have the sheriffs or the police department providing some type of community outreach at the farmer's market. That would be something that they're paid for their time. It's part of the community outreach and it's benefiting the community. There's, there are options and I'd really just want to come up with solutions rather than so much of the animosity coming from different areas of, of trying to move us or shut us down.
I, I don't think that's our intent at all, to shut you down.
I don't, I don't say that, I'm not saying that. Because I know you guys did all say unanimously last time that you were fine with shutting it down as long as we could come to the terms.
That's not exactly what we said.
Well, the petition was that you would not object.
I have the same notes that you do.
Okay.
Just, just to be clear, I did offer that if they were to consider having it at other locations, for example, if they were to have it at Stewart Park, probably a police officer would not be required to be on-site like they would in the middle of the road.
I would agree with that. I would say that is correct.
And, and they offered to put, you know, park a car across the road. Well, so some guy comes across it and hits it, hits the car and gets killed and he sues us. It's not only about protecting them.
Right, right. I, I, I think too, you need to understand, I'm sorry, I forgot, I don't know your name.
Teresa.
Teresa, I, I think you need to understand too, I'm retired from sheriff's office and I was in that outreach unit, which doesn't exist anymore. So, even if it did, if they sent me to work an event like yours in an outreach capacity, I was civilian and I could not do anything about directing traffic. I didn't have the authority to direct traffic. I don't have the authority to make an arrest. So, I, as an outreach employee, would not have the authority to cover the police presence that we're requiring if, if the street were closed.
If I might, I mean, at some, we really have two sets of issues here. I mean, one set is, you know, is, is, what location is counsel comfortable approving? And the second set is regardless of location or for a specific location, what are the requirements of the town going to be? I think we all know that if it, you know, that the requirements are probably at their highest level if we're closing down North Main as far as the expense. But really, if, if we have other. But really, if, if we have other council members that aren't willing to, you know, utilize or let them utilize North Main, then that kinda negates the need to have the conversation about what it would cost to have it there. I mean, we then move on to saying, if you wanna have it, these are the locations the town is willing to make available. So it just kinda comes down to that. I mean, I've heard two of you say, would really rather not close North Main for, for a wide range of reasons or varying reasons.
What is the total cost, again, for North Main, for that location that would?
About $10,500. I mean, round numbers.
A little over $10,000.
Is what we assume. That's not trash, that's not?
No, that's, that's, that is probably, there it is.
And signs.
And I sent this out some time back and I also sent it to the farmer's market. Alan, our Public Works Director, has identified a couple more signs that we need besides just these, however, the, the signs are a negligible amount. And we borrow signs from the county commonly, but I'd be uncomfortable borrowing them for a period of, from now until October, I don't think they would, you know, because they use those signs themselves and everything like that, so. And also, if, if they furnish like a 200 and something page contract for the insurance, I have to furnish, we furnish that to our attorney because I'm looking for him to say, we're covered. I mean, and for him to review a 225-page document, legal cost.
Takes more than 10 minutes?
And, and our public risk managers basically want a, it's something named in the town, specifically named in the town.
Which would be the Certificate of Insurance, where you are put as an additional insured. We would sign an indemnification document, which is, is what you normally do with most events, correct? I mean, that's what, that's what you sent me. But then you asked for the whole policy, which I provided to you, which, the reason why the document is so large is because it's part of the Farmer's Market Coalition, a national group that creates insurance specifically for farmer's markets and street markets and for the venues. And it encompasses all 50 states. So there are indemnification, there's different clauses for every state. You did request that. Do you, I mean, is that something that you really need if I'm providing you the Certificate of Insurance and we do the indemnification that says, here's all the liability? And it's specifically designed for a farmer's market?
Can I take a run at it?
Please.
The policy, I don't think, named the town of Lake Placid.
Uh, the policy is, uh, so what happens with the group insurance, the policy is the general policy of all coverage.
Mm-hmm.
The Certificate of Insurance and additional insureds would be what we would put on there for you. I haven't done it.
That's not correct.
There's an additional insured that they would provide once we did it. Okay, it's not?
No.
Okay.
The policy ensures, needs to ensure the town. A certificate of insurance does not amend a policy. It's a statement from the agency saying, here's what the policy covers. So it cannot be used to amend the policy.
Okay.
Phil gave you a certificate of insurance that showed you how it needed to be completed.
Correct.
That has not been done.
No, because I'm not gonna put you on there until I know that we're gonna do it.
That's, I think that's all we need to know, is when it's time.
I will have that for you, yes.
When it's time, it will be filled out the way Phil indicated.
Mm-hmm.
And then you'll have a policy that names the town as an additional insured. I get it that the policy you have names farmer's markets as insured. That needs to be amended to name the town as an additional insured, both liability and damage, property damage.
I understand what you're saying. In the document, I did read the 225 pages, so you know. The, in it, it does talk about the contract with the venue.
Let's talk about the contracts.
Correct.
There would be a contract with the entity sponsoring the event that would include an indemnification. The council gets to decide, which, you know, that's a probably no great moment because the entity sponsoring doesn't have assets. So then the council has to decide that we want to look to you or anyone else to indemnify for things that are not covered by the insurance policy. I would also recommend on my list is an indemnification from each vendor. When they sign up, you simply put that paragraph in your agreement with them where they indemnify the town.
I do that.
For example, when, if they run a cord across the street and somebody slips over and falls over or gets tripped by their stuff, we get sued, we want that indemnification. That gives each vendor a good reason to say, oh, I need to make sure my cords are secured.
Correct.
There, there are ways to do that, there are widgets that you put across them that are yellow, that, and that's their decision, what they want. But their personal indemnification generally require, you know, is a good reason, they will want to be a little more careful with how they set up and where.
Yes.
We've got another, you know, there are several things like this. And my personal intent was to give the town council a list of items that would make this cost neutral to the town.
Okay.
And protect us from, protect the citizens of our town from any liability associated with this if you're allowed to use the street. So that, that's my starting point. Does that make sense?
It does. I, I do have all of my vendors sign an indemnification and hold harmless.
Naming the town.
At every, and we would include the town in that, of course.
Okay, and we'll have our paragraph we want you to use.
Yes, absolutely.
Would we still have to do all this if it were at Stewart Park, within the confines of the park, and not on the street?
That's your decision to make. You will, I believe you can peel out certain requirements, I wouldn't say all requirements. We get, we've been sued from the Caladium, things happening with the Caladium Festival and that is in Stewart Park.
Right.
So we still will probably want insurance coverage.
They do give us an indemnif, uh, of coverage of, yeah.
Yeah, they do.
I mean, you know, you, I've, I've been here a while and I've seen, I've seen our risk management company pay out $55,000 to a lady taking a picture of murals during the Caladium Festival, walking on the sidewalk and tripped on a sprinkler three foot off the sidewalk. Jeez, I mean.
I know.
So you gotta have yourself covered.
Which is, is something that we definitely do have. We have the insurance coverage.
Yep.
I, I think it's important that we understand too, that, I, I know that the previous farmer's market was primarily focused toward the Journal Plaza and those businesses, but that is not the entire town of Lake Placid. There are a lot more businesses in the town of Lake Placid.
Absolutely.
And they are down Interlake. There's, there's a barber shop, a flower shop, a restaurant that's trying to open, there's a wonderful little grocery store, there's murals, there's a Caladium Co-op, all right down the street from Stewart Park. So, I mean, all of these businesses, the whole of Lake Placid could be served with a little bit of a more central location, realizing that, I, I understand the businesses around Journal Park, but there are other businesses as well. We are a bigger town than just Journal Park, Plaza.
I do agree, we are a bigger town than that and, but you have to start somewhere. And we started in Journal Plaza because that's where it was already established. The 12 businesses that came into play after we started chose to come to that area because we were there. I, I understand that there aren't enough places for everybody and they will have to go on other, other roads, but as it builds and as it grows, all of those places get to share in the resources of it. It's not just because it's in one location. It's, it's really no different than you saying that it's in Stewart Park, or you saying that then the people on, by Journal Plaza aren't gonna get the benefit because you want the people over by Stewart Park to get the benefit. I believe the benefit comes to the whole town. We're bringing in tourism, we're bringing in people that didn't even know that we had a town off of 27. And they go by all of those businesses and they leave and go by them on the way out.
I, I, no, I agree, I agree. And that's why I don't think you're going to take away from those businesses. And, I mean, you're talking about, well, as this grows, as it grows, where's it gonna go? It's gonna go bigger and bigger and more streets closed and why don't we just move it one time and move it to a place that can accommodate the growth?
But that, can that really accommodate the growth as well?
It's already outgrown its current location.
No.
It's run out of room.
Yes, already outgrew one location, let's put it in another location where it won't outgrow that location as quickly, or maybe at all.
I mean, there are, there are towns all over the country that close down an entire street. Um, you know, we're only talking about a block. Who's to say that down the road, as other businesses come in, it couldn't? It may not, but there's, there is a lot of potential for growth in that location.
I, I kinda think the Chamber of Commerce would beg to differ that that, that the farmer's market was the only potential that caused the growth in businesses in Lake Placid.
Oh, I, I did not say we're the only one.
Yeah.
What I did say is that we are part of it, we're a collaboration. You can hear from any number of different people, I don't take, I don't take responsibility for it or credit for it. The farmer's market was there before I was here. The only thing that we have done is tried to create something special for the community. I think we have, but that doesn't mean that I'm, I didn't do it as a solo island. It happened because there are businesses all here and what I don't think people are understanding is, behind the scenes, the collaboration that's happening with so many of these businesses, the shared resources, the support for each other, there's a, there's a lot happening that people don't really see. And I think that that spirit of that is what we tried to bring to the area and there are a lot of people that are on board with that.
I am too, just not in the street. We have another person coming up to speak.
Well, it's up to council.
If I can count right, I'm, I've been thinking long and hard about it as well and I was initially dead-set against it, but there are considerations. Um, esp, and, and I understand business owners that are south of there on, on Main Street have legitimate concerns. I'm not unopposed to giving it a try, providing everything is done, but where I have a problem, and I understand you're generating business down and, and helping the downtown and stuff, but people right south of you that also pay taxes, I have a hard time spending any public dollars trying to subsidize that, quite frankly. But I'd be willing to try it there. The, the monetary issue, that's the cost of the labor, the garbage, all that other stuff, I don't think it should be bore by the taxpayers of Lake Placid, of which there's a lot of residents too. For a, for-profit business. And I understand, and I, that's, that's what you're gonna hear and that's the, those are the people that voted to put us up here. Those are things that they're actually saying. I agree that it does, it's an, it's a driver, it brings people down, I understand all that. If we, my opinion is if we can get everything, the insurance, everything done, a trial, if it, everything works good and it's, it's working good, I'm okay with it. The other concerns that I've had from people mentioning to me is the time of year. I, that's the time of year, you wanna be outside and walking and everything, but it's also our busiest time of year. I think once people get used to a traffic pattern and realize that that's gonna happen and you don't know until you try, it could be workable. It's just an unknown, so, and I'm not unopposed to, to trying that. And, and I know it does add value to, to the businesses downtown and to the community. It does give us a sense of identity and community in the area and I hear a lot of good things about it. But I'm just one of several up here.
Downtown is more than one block.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that.
There is downtown, down Interlake as well, just on Main Street.
Yep, I understand.
You have to start somewhere.
That's true. Why not start with a location that will accommodate you as you grow?
We're starting in the location where it has been and it has an eight-year running experience there.
We know we have to move it.
There, there's, seems to be a lot of people here tonight. Let, let, let me ask the question, how many of you here are for this? All right, put your hands down. How many of you are business people? See, that, that, that tells me a lot right there.
I, I don't think they would be adversely affected by Stewart Park.
I, I.
There's a dais for that.
Well, we're not.
There's a podium for that, right?
We're, we're not gonna get back and forth. If you, if you have a comment, I'll let you come up and speak, but I, I think what we need to do first is, is have a motion here.
I'll make a motion that we support the farmer's market at Stewart Park.
I don't know if there's a point, I would second that, but I don't know if there's a point for that. That, that, we're kind of an impasse, the way I see it.
We can second it for discussion.
Well, I would second it for discussion, yes, but the further discussion is, we're not gonna get anywhere with that. And I would agree, yes.
Not, nobody wants it, somebody does. I do.
All right, I, I think we have a couple people here that would like to speak, so let's, uh, let's give them a, a chance to stand up.
I appreciate the chance to speak. I'm Tracy, Smoke, I'm partial owner of the Blueberry Patch and a member, longtime member of Lake Placid. I wanna come up here and say, I hate contention and I hate disagreement and it makes me sad. Um, I have a personal relationship with each and everybody all up there and that's way more important than where we have a farmer's market. But I do ask that y'all be open to it. I've had conversations with two of you and I hear some openness. I want you to know that when this discussion started, I was like, yeah, it's street, makes sense, makes sense. And then I did step back, Ms. Hayes, and I did say, it's not just about Tracy and it's not just about the Blueberry Patch and it's not just about the three businesses in the Journal Plaza and it's not just about the businesses that are slowly growing from that nucleus. It's not, I understand that. But that is a huge nucleus of Lake Placid. And we're not just talking about just the businesses making a profit, we're talking about the health of a very growing town right now. And it's not just the businesses, it's not just the Caladium Festival, it's not just the murals, it's not just the lakes, it's a symbiotic relationship. And as I stepped back and I said, let's look at this from all angles, look at this from safety of pedestrians going, let's look at this from the, the broader scope of two intersecting ta, uh, streets that make up the downtown Lake Placid and the businesses there, let's look at it from all angles. And I did, and I'm coming you, to you with my opinion, but having looked at it from a broader scope, I really tried to. And I went on the internet when I don't know what I'm doing and I looked at multiple places and I looked at, you know, I see the advantage of the farmer's market in my back door every Saturday and I see hundreds and hundreds of people coming where my store can't, we have to limit the number of workers so that the customers can get around. That's a good problem to have. And if it's across town, I don't think we're gonna have that. And again, I'm one business, I know that, and I'm not coming to you asking for you to do this for the Blueberry Patch. I'm coming to you as a resident of Lake Placid that has children that are trying to decide if they're gonna move back here or not, and I want them to have a thriving place to come back to. And businesses are a backbone of that element. And I also have. And I also have stepped back and I said, when I'm driving through other towns, I see a lot of businesses, and I won't even name them because I don't wanna go against anyone, but that you see in a lot of commercial places that require no farmer's market to get people to come to them because it's the way of our society now. That there's tons of businesses that require no extra work from a thriving town council and town that people are going to come to because that's the way of the world now. And I see people moving to Lake Placid because they don't want the way of the world. They enjoy Lake Placid. They enjoy the downtown culture. And I'm not talking about just the businesses. I'm talking about the lakes and the streets and the walkways and all of that working together. I'm talking about the symbiotic relationship. And they're coming to Lake Placid for that. And so, no, if we want a whatever parlor and dispensary and whatever, we don't have to have a farmer's market for people to come and make those businesses thriving. But I think we have an opportunity here with the growth that is coming to be intentional about what kinda growth we want. And having streets closed for a farmer's market, dad gum, it feels good. And it feels like people are getting along. And it feels like fellowship and relationship and thriving businesses. And it feels like people wanting to come to our area. And when you're there on a Saturday and you hear those people and you see them and you see them walking their dogs and their kids and listening to music that's provided by the farmer's market, that feels good. And I'm telling you, I know that it's not about that. I know that increases sales tax. And I know sales tax doesn't come squat to our budget. I get that for our town budget. But it does bring people moving to Lake Placid. And it does increase property value. And it does increase the quality of life here in Lake Placid. And when I think about a symbiotic relationship, and I'm going backwards because I'm all over the place, and I Googled farmer's market and it talked about the benefit. And I thought, why would the town council wanna support? I get, closing a road is a big deal. I get that it's not just a flippant thing. I totally understand that. But if downtown Bradenton can do it, I think it's a possibility to look at for Lake Placid. And if, uh, many other towns, uh, big cities that do it. And when I thought, why would the town council want to not only say, okay, yes, you can do it, but why would the town council maybe wanna support and encourage the growth of what has, has started in the nucleus of this area? Why would they wanna support that? We know that it's an outlet for vendors. We know that about farmer's markets. We can do it at Stewart Park, we can do it at, uh, North Main. It builds relationships. It's things to do in Lake Placid. And it's a healthier downtown. And when you play, talk about, I'd looked at, well, how do you place a farmer's market? You don't isolate it. And I'm not saying Stewart Park is completely isolated. Don't, please don't misread my, my heart here and my intention. It's not completely, completely isolated. But what makes the farmer's market work where it is? Is the type of businesses that are in that immediate nucleus. It's the cafes, it's the boutiques, it's the craft brewery. It's all of that working together that creates a place that people wanna enjoy hanging out. Across town and in a vacant lot, that does not have the same feel. Google even says it. It's not Tracy, that's what I want you, and Google's not the Bible. I totally agree with that. But this is not just Tracy coming and saying this. This is valid research that people have. And I wasn't one site and it wasn't Wikipedia. I've told my kids, never research on Wikipedia. But the, these are people that know what they're talking about. It has, and this has been successful because it's grown. And the people that are willing to put the time and effort and not, they don't get, they're not getting a penny in their paycheck, so to speak, because they're willing, they want to do this. And you, there is a, I don't understand why there wouldn't be a hallelujah. We've got a group of people that are working together and willing to grow this for the health of our town. I don't understand that. At the last meeting, it was my understanding and we've talked about the, um, uh, the details of wording, I guess. But it was definitely the feeling that if the group led by Teresa could mark all the boxes, it could happen. Now, we can get into semantics and y'all can change your mind, totally your pur- purview. Sometimes the boxes seem really big. To have an insurance policy that has to cover any crash along a detour seems like a really big box. So not only, there's a feeling, I have a feeling, that not only was there, is there a lack of excitement, which I don't understand. There's also a feeling that these big boxes have to be checked and that they're not all maybe 100% necessary. Maybe they are. I looked through, um, the police requirement. I don't see that on any, um, ordinance or this or that, that the police officer has to be there. And we can talk about the safety of the people, but we've got hundreds of people coming for, um, mural tours and all that. We've got a lot of, um, liability associated with things like that that we kind of look the other way and we may, maybe aren't saying that has to have the same degree of liability coverage. You all are in charge and you all will decide what type of liability coverage needs to happen. As a group, we've come to an agreement that we will try our hardest. Whatever requirements, whatever big boxes need to be checked, we're gonna try hard to meet those big boxes. Because we live it, we see it, and we're thankful for it. And we wanna continue to make it happen. And it's not so the Blueberry Patch can have a bigger check at the end of its Saturday. I love this town and I love what's going on down there. It feels really, really good. And I also think it has a lot, has a lot of value monetarily for our town and people wanting to come here. So I'll leave it on that. Thank you.
I'm Chris Duncan with Good Vibes Juice and Smoothie. And, um, I'll be honest with you, there's nothing else to say. Tracy said it all. And, um, y'all gotta sleep with it at the end of the day.
Good evening, all. At the risk of getting a big old target, I'm gonna be a dissenting opinion. All of these impassioned pleas are absolutely fantastic. And you guys have done a phenomenal job with the farmer's market, no doubt. They are phenomenal businesses. They're all great. There's other businesses in town, too. Yes, there is benefit. Yes, it's been at Journal Plaza. But it's not like it wasn't known that this day was coming and that that was gonna be a small location, that there was gonna need to be growth. I work at the museum and I'm there every time I see an emergency vehicle go speeding down Main Avenue because that's the only thoroughfare running north and south of town. And so, we're gonna detour all that. It, from a business standpoint, it doesn't make sense to me. As a business owner, I can't come to the town and say, hey, will you close this? Because we have such a great, we have a great response to it. I look at the folks on Interlake. There's Logan's, a new restaurant. There's Hartzell's, it's been there forever. And it's a, and God knows, they've, they've certainly supported this town for a very long time. There's also a new restaurant coming. I'm, I love the hallelujah about the, about the town and how it feels. But is closing the street the only place that we can feel that way? Please understand, I am not against, I, I'm not standing here imploring you to, to not do this or to not try it. I'm just saying that for those of us that have reservations about it, we're not bad people. We don't want to cause a lot of animosity and contention. We just have a different point of view and a different perspective. And where does this stop? I mean, if it grows so big this year, what happens next year? Where's it gonna go? Are we gonna be right back at the same place? That's all I'm asking to, for everybody to consider. And certainly, if there's been problems with the affordability of it at Journal Plaza, is there gonna be a problems with affordability here? That, that's, I just have questions about things like that. And what sort of precedent does it set? I mean, it, it's been super, it's been fantastic. Is that the only place it can be super and fantastic? Is the only reason people are coming to the farmer's market because they're at this one particular location? And if we don't close Main Street, does that mean nobody's gonna come? That's, that's just, it's just a question. And, and, and all due respect, folks, all due respect, all due respect. I have nothing against you all, nothing at all. I wish you all the success. I want you to send everybody down to the Historical Society. I just want you to understand that, that just because everybody isn't on board with the street closing isn't because we think that it's just a horrible, horrible idea and we're horrible people and don't wish you all the success in the world. Thank you.
I won't take a lot of time and obviously, I'm the new kid on the block. But, uh, my experience.
State your name for the record, please.
Oh, Mitch Ross. Placid Lakes Golf Course. Can't get enough of that out. I have a lot of experience in this, as far as working these things as a police officer. And then I have some personal thoughts also. First, if you look aware, when a McDonald's builds a fast food operation, where's the best place to put a hot dog stand or another hamburger stand? Right next door. When we talk about these farmer's markets and stuff, in the city of Milwaukee, in the city of Chicago, where I'm very familiar, I can tell you that even if they have it in a park, that park is across the street from a ton of businesses. These things bring people to the farmer's market, but it also brings, brings business to the stores around it. And if closing one block is a big issue, I don't see how we grow. Or two blocks or three blocks. Once a weekend. If you wanna Google something, Google the town of Madison, Wisconsin. They do it every weekend around the Capitol. And if you think that's a pain in the rear end, this would be nothing. Okay? And even if it costs an officer or three officers and insurance issues, I gotta tell you, don't you want to bring business? Good business, stable business. Bring community together. That's what this is about. We don't live in that day and age anymore and this is good. And I have no stake in this. The golf course is far from this place, okay? I have no stake in it. But I will tell you this. When my wife comes here next Saturday, as I drive her back here and we move here, we will be at that farmer's market as much as we can. But I don't wanna go to some park and beat the hell out of that. I wanna go where I'm in the heart of things and I get to meet people and talk to people and see kids and see dogs being walked. And businesses being visited by these people and people spending money in the farmer's market and at the restaurant next door. That's what I wanna see. Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Let's go ahead and hold the council and see how that goes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Satt?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Mayor Hallbrook?
No.
And one, there's one other thing that I just wanted to bring up. I know that, um, the intersection there at Dow Hall and Main Street is a concern. I know that, um, there's a, there's things that you guys are looking into to remediate the fact that it is a dangerous intersection for people crossing the street. Saturday is the busiest day in that area with all the businesses. Closing the street would give people safe access from both the town and the county parking lots that are there. They could walk across the street safely, visit all of the businesses and have a safe thing. Whereas trying to cross that street on a busy Saturday when there isn't anything closed or if the farmer's market moves is, is dangerous. And there's a lot of liability in that for the town as well. So putting it there does alleviate some of that liability. So I understand you're taking on other, some liability, but you're also alleviating a lot as well.
You ready for another motion, Mr. Mayor? And I, and I, let me, let me try to be slow but thorough. I make a motion that we allow for the farmer's market to operate with the approval of Highlands County on North Main for the dates they've requested as long as they are able to come to the appropriate contractual agreement with the town to cover the cost that the town has for the closure and opening of the road, that the town has for the appropriate signage, et cetera. That we allow it to happen there if they're able to come to that con- contractual agreement with the town and provide the proper insurance that meets the requirements of our town and is okay by our risk management agency and legal department. That's number one. Number two, if the farmer's market applicant decides that they would like to hold the farmer's market at a different location, that we allow them to utilize Stewart Park, Park Street or Stewart Street, again, with the provision of the proper insurance and with the more limited cost associated with it to the town, you know, being spelled out in a contractual agreement. So, in support of my motion, basically what I wanna do, since we are now on September 12th and they wanna get started here in five weeks or so, is give them the opportunity, if they can, if they can come to an agreement and cover those costs and have it in North Main, wonderful. If for whatever reason they decide they wanna explore another opportunity such as Stewart or, or Stewart Street or Park Street or Bellevue or something, that they then work with town staff to, to make it happen there. And, you know, without having to come back to us for a subsequent decision. I mean, that's why it's a two-part motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I'd like to get an opinion from Chief Fanzler, if he's still here. Is he still here? Do we need, uh, chief is, what is your opinion with reference to police coverage if we do that?
We would have to look back into repaying reserves. Over the past couple of years, we have taken and made our reserve unit kind of a, more of a volunteer basis. We will now have to go back into looking at bringing them back on, at least at the special detail rate. Right now, we do have other special details that our officers are working. So it is gonna be a little bit of a challenge. I'm not saying it's impossible. But we will, we'll have to look at some options.
And do you feel like police presence is necessary?
Somebody's gonna have to shut the road down and it has to be an official. So there is no way around that particular event.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's the important note is that we cannot allow private citizens, I mean, someone will have to shut down the road at a specific time. And then some other public employees. public employee will have to reopen the road at the appropriate time again, correct? So one way or the other, we're going to have employees every Saturday opening and closing that area if it happens.
Now, I don't know that we need to be there the entire seven and a half hours. Somebody definitely needs to be there to help protect, you know, put the barriers up and take them down. But yes, I don't know that necessarily we need to be there for the entire seven and a half hours. So, I mean, there, there are some cuts, some costs that we can probably save as far as having maybe an on-duty officer or, or just having somebody come out and for a couple of extra hours pay. And because policy for us is if you come out for five minutes, it's an automatic two hours. So we could, even if it's myself, come out periodically to put the barricades up, come back at the end, shut it down. But there, I mean, when you say it's going to be that way, that's the way it's going to be.
But to the chief's point, even, even in the best-case scenario, just so the public understands what you just said was, it's going to be a minimum of $180 just to close and, and then reopen the street every single day.
Pretty much, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And just for the record, the town administrator highly recommends having a police officer there all the time. If you're going to close a main road, I mean, we have one there at the Caladium Festival, we have one there at the town fair. If you're closing roads, my recommendation that you have a police officer there the entire time. Okay. Yeah. One more person.
My name's Alexander Kope. I have vast experience in the event coordinating and planning industry. I've ran and market and managed hundreds of events in South Florida. I've dealt with road closures, and I know there's certain requirements and stuff like that. I want to hint on more the, the fact of what the market can do for the community and what, how we could all work together. But markets do provide a ripple effect for where they're established. But I think there's a misunderstanding what a actual farmer, a farmer's market actually is. It's a transitional seasonal market that doesn't necessarily have to be in any specific location. It is transparent, is fluid, it can move around as needed. The vendors that are associated with this specific market have a loyalty to the community, to Lake Placid. We have an affliction for it. It's a beautiful community, and we love to see it grow. I love the fact that Teresa hinted on that the 12 businesses that have come and grown since the market's conception, that fact is a beautiful, beautiful fact. When we look at growth, there's so much more growth that can happen, and everybody can initialize their own growth at their own terms. If someone wanted to start a farmer's market further down Main Street, that's their prerogative. They could do that. They could seek and find and associate themselves with local business owners that would want to associate themselves with that market and then set a date and throw their own shindig. It's totally possible. But for, for it, for, for the thought to be seen that it can only be a function in these parts of town that are granted or given by the county, it does, doesn't make sense. Because the farmer's market could easily just say, "We're leaving," and go somewhere else. That's not, I'm not saying that that's what has been said, but I'm saying it could go anywhere. It's, it's, it's a fluid thing. But anyhow, the road closure, I've dealt with multiple road closures. We've done four years in a row at Gulf Stream Park. I am the main event organizer that closes, that, that runs, it's, it's a green event, it's a vegan event. We shut down the entire Gulf Stream Park. We put up barricades. We don't have any police presence except members that are employed by Gulf Stream Park. Now, granted, it's a private business that has, that has many streets that are, that are encompassed in that property, in, in that compound. But, and with that said, what I'm getting at is that all I've seen from, from the first council meeting to today is a matter of dollars. And one thing I want to bring up is how much money does that road generate in the 28 weeks every Saturday? And that has to be thought about. So the main thing is there, there has to be structure, there's rules, there's boxes that has to, have to be checked. But we have to consider that the one thing that's been put in, in front is, it's a dollar amount of, a, a, a monetary value. We have to think that, for one, I know that there's been a lot of support from, from community members speaking on behalf of, the growth is great. We can, we can, we can quantify it. We, we can create more community if we allow there to be openness. So closing a road, maybe we don't have to close a road, maybe we don't have to even have this discussion. It's just, it was brought up because it seemed like the better thing for the town to bring everything together. Because we are growing, but we don't necessarily have 1,000 vendors like the Caladium Festival, and it doesn't necessarily have to be that. It is, it's a very intimate setting that has a ripple effect to the rest of the town, and people appreciate that. When they come to the Journal Plaza and they see what the farmer's market is all about, all they want to do is go stroll around the beautiful streets of Lake Placid and go see the, seek the murals and, and, and see what we have to offer. So with that said, I just think that there has to be a little bit more of a, an understanding of what a farmer's market really is and what it does for the community. All right? Thank you. That's what I have.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, and I, I probably should have made this part of the motion, but I just, in support of my motion, I, hopefully it was understood that what we were talking about was a period of time beginning October 15th, 2022, through April 29th, 2023. We are, if, if this were to pass, that's the period of time we're talking about.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and hold the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
Questions.
Where do we stand with the, with the police officers on scene? Is that a part of this motion? I mean, I don't want something out there.
And, and with the ability to look at it and, and if it's not working, pull it. Where's that?
Yeah, I, I guess I presumed that there was, it was conditional upon the contractual agreement that our staff and legal put together.
Which includes?
Which would include, obviously, the right for either the council or the mayor solely to, to stop it. It would follow the recommendations as put forward by the administrator in regards to the, the police presence. I don't know whether or not, if this passes, we want to go over Mr. Harris's 12 or 13 points, or whether or not we need to do that now before we vote. I had no problem with any of them. Other than I, I'd probably remove number seven that called for the placement of portable toilets, but that's, I'm, I'm assuming all the businesses of the area recognize that they're going to bear the burden, just like they currently do for toilets. But, I mean, all the other conditions in, Mr., I forget if it was 12 or 13 items, but whatever that sheet was, I would say is part of, I don't know if we were actually, is, is it a contractual agreement? Is, I guess it's going to be a contractual agreement between the town, perhaps the county as a party, and Farmer's Market Inc. or whatever their organization is.
County would not be a party. We, it would be their duty to go to the county and get the road closed technically, because it is a county road. It's not our road. We can't close it. I've been told that the county will look to this council's action, and if we support it and say, "Go forward," that they will too. Yes, I would need some direction. I can see, take out number seven. I, it was, to me, seemed important that the public be advised where they can find a restroom there. And I know some businesses may not be represented here tonight, but they've got restrooms that will be impacted as well. So I was thinking that it would be appropriate to put up.
I'm good with, I'm certainly good with number six. I just read number seven to be that they would have to add additional portable restrooms.
I don't know the answer to that one. That's, to me, is the question. It depends on how many people come, I would think, as to whether it would overflow the Blueberry Patches toilet.
Yeah, well.
That was a joke. It's a humor somewhere.
I, I, I think that, I think that with the full understanding that either this council, which, as everyone can see, is somewhat divided on this issue, or the mayor solely, that if there are things that become very important that we're hearing from staff need to be done, then the expectation was that group would have to step up and fix what becomes problems. Otherwise, is that, is that what it is, Mr. Williams? Is there 13 items? 14?
What about electric service? That was my guess.
No, I think they, they're aware that everyone, that the town's not going to provide any electric service. And it's not that the town, it's, it's not about the money, it's that the damage that would be done to the poles and all that. And so, so whatever that list is would be part of the agreement, you know, less number seven.
Perfect, thank you. Needed guidance.
So you're amending your motion to include that?
To include that list less number seven. And, and, and for those of you that don't have this list, it just requires that there are, there's a lot of planning in advance and notification and mapping and what things are going to happen. And I think it's important, you know, since, since there is a lot of concern about this location, that every precaution is taken as we hopefully move through this season of the market being there.
I didn't cover trash pickup. Phil did, you and your list.
Yeah, it's, it's in there. If, if the public will go to the website, the town website, you will see halfway down agenda package, and then you'll see addenda, just additional comments. That is on our website, and it's also a link in the package that they can.
And so let me say, and I'll make it part of the motion, that, that, that the, when I would say the vendor, I mean, the farmer's market organizing entity, they will be responsible for all trash pickup and disposal. And, and that means that if their sub-vendors handle it, great. If not, if they want to handle it, fine. If they need to come to us and rent a dumpster, but we are not going to go, to be clear, we're not going to go behind them on Sunday or Monday and pick up bags of trash and handle the trash.
That's my understanding.
Just, just for your information, we, we have agreed with, with them in, in the emails that I've sent out to council, I believe. We've already come to that agreement, and so that's, that's sort of been arranged.
Okay.
And we also were at $2 million liability, and our public risk manager came back down
to $1 million.
So there, so there's been, it hasn't been a one-way street.
Right. And I, and I have, I have a feeling that once people start, and then if this passes, if, once people start talking to each other in the next couple of weeks, that the policy will probably be adequate, that they're going to have to come to the language that the town proposes. And if they can't, then that, that's a deal killer. I mean, we're going to cover ourselves insurance, so that's implicit. My understanding is that covering us via insurance is implicit in this going forward.
James and I saw a lady fall at the Saturday night, and she immediately started an answer, asking about the town's, you know, insurance. And the vendors that were at that thing just went poof. And I just want to make sure that the town doesn't get left.
And, and that's what's, and that's, and the, the good thing to, to the folks' credit is they have a, what I'll call, central vendor. And I mean, our contract, right, Mr. Harris, will be between us and what I'll call the primary vendor. They then, they will then provide proof that in the, what I'll call, the secondary vendors has the clause that you would recommend that also holds us harmless, or whatever the proper language is. But that'll all be incumbent upon them to provide us that documentation.
It will. Just realize that your primary vendor is, I, I, I don't know this, where did she go?
She's sitting right there.
Oh, front, front row. Are you doing this in the name of a limited liability company or corporation?
It's a corporation.
So there are probably very little assets in that corporation?
Yes.
So there's nothing to get if they default?
I understand.
Just nothing. We, we will be looking to insurance, but that, that's why insurance is so very important.
I, I understand. And if, obviously, if this is to pass in a few minutes, if we can't come to agreement, then they can come back again on October 10th or whatever our next meeting is, and we can talk again, but.
We'll discuss the size of the boxes again.
Exactly. But this is, this is where I think we were a month ago, in that we are going to give them an opportunity for this season, from this October through next April, to do this if they can check those boxes.
Yes, sir.
One other thing I just wanted to ask about or bring up, the fact that you had said that you could cancel it at will. Could we have some terminology in there that does say, just, you can't do it on a whim just because you decided? But there has to be some meaningful reason to call us and say, "We're done," or give us an opportunity to address anything if something comes up?
I met, my list says that you get a copy of all complaints.
Okay.
My thinking is, if there's something going wrong, you need to address it.
Absolutely.
Before up here starts addressing it.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, it goes away.
Okay.
So hopefully, you can fix it.
Okay.
But if you don't, that man right there has.
Yeah, you're, you're not going to want me to fix it.
Okay.
And you wouldn't get a vote.
All right.
Period. Because it, it is a public street. I heard how definitely he voted against the last motion, which tells me that man's not going to just unilaterally say, "Ah, I went to the farmer's market and they didn't look right to me." Blink.
Right.
You know, that's, that's his job, to exercise discretion for the town. So to answer your question, hard no on that one, sorry. That's my recommendation to council. They vote, I don't.
Pretty much the way it's got to be.
Yeah.
Then you've got council meetings. They could pull the plug too, if he has not.
We would definitely give you the opportunity to take care of it first.
I appreciate it. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, almost definitely.
Okay.
I'm not going to just come in and tell you, "Hey, pack up and get out." No, that, that won't happen.
Well, I appreciate that.
There'll be, there'll be quite a bit of discussion before that happens.
Okay.
Because we want to give you every opportunity. And look, we know there's going to be growing paints. There's going to be a lot of things that we're going to have to work through. But what everybody said is true. There's a lot of towns across this great country that do this every weekend.
Every day.
There's not a reason in the world it can't work. One of the things that kind of bothers me is I know the Historical Society wants to start their own flea market or, "Oh, you're not going to do it now?"
No, excuse me. No, the only thing we were doing was a preseason act.
Oh, was that okay? Okay. Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure how that was going to work, but.
That was just preseason.
No, 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 no. We just saw an opportunity in the absence of anything until these guys, until the regular farmer's market.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because what I, what I was hoping we'd do is just get everybody to work together. Now, I, I, I do know that on the other end of town, Logan's Restaurant is going to be starting an indoor farmer's market.
Yes.
And right now, he's got up to 30 vendors already signed up. He can't handle that many, but he's going to have to weed them down. But he is, he's getting ready to start that. There's going to be a parking problem up there, too. I mean, I, no matter, we know it's going to be growing paints.
Yeah.
We're just going to have to work through this. But, but I, but I agree with everything that's said. We got to get everybody together. We just got to come up with an agreement. It's our job to protect the town and its residents. And the boxes may seem to be big, but really, in our view, they're not that big, because we know what we got to do to protect our, our town and our citizens. So you guys, we, we just need to get together and see if we can work out an agreement. Okay?
I think that being said, if there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and I'll just call for the question.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Satt?
No.
Councilmember Hayes?
No.
Mayor Hockeck?
Yes.
Thought there would be applause on that, but.
Okay. Next is 6D3, subject to sewer project design proposal. Thank you, folks, for coming.
As council knows, we have the consultants currently working on the design for the wastewater treatment plant for our large Septic to Sewer project. So the next phase of that was to get consultants working on the actual design of the individual sewer projects. So what I've done is I have tried to intelligently parse out the work between our competent engineers that are on our library and I've asked them for proposals on each of these projects. What you have before you is their proposals to do that design work, so I've given those to you for review. I will say, I kind of am pushing, trying to rush and get them, so I haven't done a full review, I think there will still probably be some changes in the scope of this. I have not let Bert review them or look at them either, so I would ask that you consider these, at least approve them per our review and, and staff review. As we go through, there are a couple of different options I'd like to talk about. All these are grant-funded designs, we can go through each one if you'd like, and then there are a couple areas in which we do not have water service. So I have asked the design firms to also give us a, a design cost to include, just for designing a water main as part of this project. Keep in mind, all of the survey costs, all the, the main costs are attributed to the sewer project because we have to do those anyways, so this is a minimal cost, I think, to the town in order to get a water main also designed. I'm probably going to talk about the water main a little bit more because that's kind of a new concept I don't think we've really talked about, but in doing this, I think if the town decided to construct that later, it cannot be grant-funded and we would most likely have to go out for SRF loans or grants in order to put that water main in. Just for y'all's discussion, I don't think you have to make a decision on those tonight, but I do need to get the consultants out working on survey and the actual sewer project. So we can discuss the water main projects and if you want to, maybe at next month's meeting, we can make a decision on those, but I would like for some action, you know, a decision or discussion on the actual design of the wastewater sewer projects.
So just to be clear, Mr. Barber, what you're asking us to do is approve, in other words, you, you had preliminarily budgeted or the grant had budgeted $3 million for design?
Yes, sir.
And you're telling us that it looks like that's going to be 1.9, thereabouts. So you're just asking us for the okay to move forward on the design of those 10 specific projects?
Correct. And I think I would add the caveat that it's per my review and Bert's as well, because we, I literally just got these in in time to get them on council's agenda.
So for wastewater, do you feel, will these 10, will they cover everywhere that it is potentially feasible that we would put wastewater?
Yes, minus the two projects we've already excluded. So if you remember, Sun and Lakes and Highway Park were taken out of that.
Right. But this, these will cover everything that we, we may not even be able to do all these, but we, this will cover everything we could potentially handle in the next several years doing, out of that $40 million grant?
Yes, sir. It's all the design work to do that. And just to add to that, we've already done the, the hydraulic analysis on our sewer system, some of this work is a upgrade that we're going to have to do to our current system. So the CSA 6 force main 3 upsizing design, that's the force main running down Green Dragon Road that goes into, what is it, Serenity Village, not, yeah, and back behind the old, where the old wastewater plant was, that force main's going to have to be upgraded. And we've included that as a work that needs to be done also.
And then your point on the water, the water, the, your point on the four water main projects is, is that while, while these engineers are doing all of the surveying, all the topos, all of that for these sewer projects, now is, is going to be the least expensive time to also do the engineering, to extend, to do water pipe?
Yes, sir.
Design and engineering?
Yes, sir.
That we could bid from?
Correct. You know, because the survey was going to have to happen as part of the sewer project anyway.
Right.
So those are costs we can attribute to the grant that needed to happen anyways.
Okay.
So I think as far as getting a water main design, this will be the, the most cost-efficient. To add to the conversation a little bit, as we were talking about some ARPA funds, I just want to give you a heads up on some upcoming projects, like I think the ARPA funds could possibly be used for that water main design, also could possibly be used for, we have the pipe bursting project, we're still waiting on DEO to approve the, I know you've been on me for that and I'm, I can't do anything else about it, but if there's a budget overrun on grant, we can also use ARPA funds on that. So I think those are the big spends utility-wise coming up that you would want to take into consideration when you think about this water main design. I also think that in our, our push to get folks hooked up to sewer, there's a lot of value to also giving them water. So the, the spots where we're looking at putting in a water main design would be around Lake Placid, obviously we don't have water there, down Lake Mirror, and it would connect our two water systems, there's a few spots between Serena and Pearl, right there, and then there's one spot in Lake June from basically the sicko right here, it goes on around Lake June Road that doesn't have a water main. So i- if you just think of, you know, value to these folks, we're, we're trying to get hooked up to sewer, if we're also giving them a water main, I think that makes it a little bit different of a conversation, just for y'all's consideration.
So while you're on water, I, can I assume that if we're doing in particular the Lake Mirror, that, that would hook up, that design would incorporate how we were hooking our water systems together and at least show how we would then hook up to the Highway Park water system? I mean, I, I think, you know, what's critical to me, and I, when I watch the news and I hear about what's happening in Jackson, Mississippi, for instance, we need to make sure that we are hooking these systems up so that if heaven forbid we have a problem in one or two production facilities, that we can turn the right valves and still, you know, send high-quality water to people and not be in the situation that, from what I hear in the news, Jackson, Mississippi has themselves in.
To reassure you, we have already done that.
Okay.
There are automatic opening valves that if Highway Park or the Tomoka Water System fail, they open up and we don't ever have to go out and do anything. So it's, we've already used them a couple times actually, when we've had some pump failures and they've operated flawlessly. So, so far, we've had a lot less water outages because we've done that. So you guys approved, that was the interconnect project we did a while back, but this would provide another source of interconnect if something were to happen.
Thank you.
I would lobby to consider adding trunk mains for our reuse system down 27 and Main Street, to the extent they're not there, so that we can well supply those areas. Maybe, maybe also down West Interlake toward Catfish. Now, that may get into a bit of a discussion because that's all not in the town, but it will, well, actually down Catfish is.
It is.
Well, I mean, we're...
On one side, but not the other.
Of course.
We would need to talk about, because we're not doing any work on 27 really, or Main Street, so those would kind of be separate projects, but we are going down Catfish with a force main, so that would be in the same corridor, if we're wanting to add a, another pipe in that corridor, now's the time to do it.
Well, we may not be going down 27 or Main Street with a main project, but we got to get rid of this water and I would sure suggest that those two ought to be considered in the project.
Okay. Well, and, and I guess we'd have to figure out how to fund that, so I'm not trying to take away James's police station, although he'll probably throw something at me, but it's for council to consider how you want to prioritize these projects, but I, I think those are the big projects, Kevin, nothing else?
Those are the big projects?
At least utility-wise, so...
So if we're going to provide water for these people, are we going to annex them?
That's your decision.
Good thought, they annex me.
Yes, ma'am. I'm mindful of that.
I know you are.
This, well, these areas will certainly be within our, I mean, that's, that's certainly a conversation we're going to have to have, but they will certainly be within our, our regional utility area that we are responsible for providing utilities and I, and I, and I agree with Mr. Harris, I think we ought to, I mean, maybe if, Mr. Barber, if you want to come back and give us the ballpark idea of what it would cost, but I think we need to look at, you know, what it would cost, what, what the engineering for more purple pipe in the two or three areas that Mr. Harris described are.
Let me be a little more enlightening and let me focus on the annexation question. That's going to be a tough one in my mind. It's one thing because people want water and we generally say, if you want our water, you have to agree to annex. Annexation then becomes a case-by-case consideration because we reduce the water fee by 25% when we annex them. The wastewater collection is a totally different thing. Nobody wants to have to pay that cost and pay that cost monthly because they don't drink that and it, right now their toilet flushes, so it's not a crisis. So compelling them to hook up to a wastewater, compelling them to pay the money for hookup if we don't manage to get the grants, and compelling annexation, there's no carrot there. With water, there is a carrot. So my recommendation is going to, I've worried about this one for a couple of years now. My recommendation is going to be stay the course on water. If they want to hook up and get our water, they have to consent to annexation, but not require an annexation for wastewater.
And I also believe, and I also, I also believe there is a huge difference, a huge difference between, if at some stage we decide to require annexation consents, to actually acting upon those consents.
Yes, sir.
And I think policy has probably changed since even maybe Ms. Hayes's house was annexed and we, you know, we...
Forced it.
We've evolved, our policy has evolved.
May go back to.
Told you.
Who wouldn't have had Ms. Hayes on council, hit me on that?
You're right. You might, should have rethought that in the beginning. Is there a motion somewhere here?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
Just wondering.
I think, Mr. Barber, I mean, so what action, to Ms. Hayes's question, you, you need us to take action and authorize you so you can go to these engineering firms and get this work started, is that what you're requiring or asking?
I would request approval for at least the first 10 that we're showing that are sewer grant-specific, pending mine and Bert's review. Like, I, I've got to do some work with them on the scope and make sure that's all good. Their, their prices honestly seem reasonable, so I, I don't really know that I plan on beating them up on that unless you guys see one that you don't think is reasonable, but I think it's mostly going through the scope and refining that, so I think you can approve it pending our review.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the, the town engineer to go out for a design on items 1 through 14 pending his approval and legal approval.
Go out for design, we've already gone out for the publication now, this is to enter the contract, isn't it, Joe?
Yeah, this is...
Well, that's what I meant, I mean, to contract, I meant to, to contract for design services.
But then you have to say for the mayor to sign.
Well, yes, obviously for the mayor to, we authorize the mayor to sign.
Yeah, and I guess let me back you up a little bit because 11 through 14 are the water...
I understand.
Okay.
I understand, that was part of my deal. And then I was going to continue and say, in that we ask you to come back to us with information at our next meeting in regards to what may be involved or what costs would be projected for design of reclaimed water in the areas that Mr. Harris laid out.
I guess...
That doesn't, that doesn't take into effect, you've already got the design costs there, you're just trying to figure out for the 11 through 14 for the water side, because it can't be paid out of the grant, you're going to have to identify what money is to use to pay for that.
Yeah, there, yeah, there are two things, what you were saying, where the water funds need to come from, and then I think they're talking about two additional projects for reuse main extensions.
Right.
That we're not showing.
Yeah. The intent of my motion, Mr. Mr. Wilson, was that I believe, obviously, we have to, we have to move forward on getting the sewer stuff, 1 through 10, designed, and so this is going to be going to people to design it. And I think Mr. Barber has indicated that on 11 through 14, that the lowest cost we will probably ever be able to get to design these water systems will be while they are doing the work on the other side of the street or in the same basic window as they're going down the road, so we might as well get those, get that designed, and that design would be good for years, even if we slow-walked the provision of water, correct?
Yes. Just, and one other quick comment, if we provide water and they hook up, that gives us the billing mechanism for those sewer customers, because otherwise, we're going to either put a meter on their well, or we're going to create just a, kind of a blanket charge and guess at what they should be charged on an average.
Right, because all the sewer rates are based on water usage.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you for adding 11 through 14.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
I guess for discussion, the only thing I'll ask is where, or have we decided where you want those funds to come from, for the, the water main portion?
That says town utility funded.
Wouldn't you need to propose a budget amendment?
Yeah. I presume you were going to come, that you were going to get this ball started and you were going to come back to us with that.
Yeah.
And you're, you're going to make your case whether we should use ARPA funds, utility funds, and I would, I would encourage that we try these water, I mean, that, I know we can't specifically use grant funding, but every cost that can be attributed to wastewater, you know, needs to be put in the wastewater column.
I guess I'm just concerned, I'd like to know where those, I think we need to know where those funds are coming from before we can authorize it, I guess. And, and we can put the water main portion off until next month if you want to have that with the ARPA funds discussion.
No.
Because I, once we tell them go, they're going to start billing us on that and I, we need to make sure budget-wise where you guys want that to come out of.
Does the, does the water fund have $199,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, you got the money for it, otherwise we'll wait and do it next month, that's pretty much your call, the way I see it.
In the, in the reserve account, we have the money.
Okay. And I guess that's, Kevin, what's your recommendation on doing this? You're the...
I, I think it's absolutely, makes the most sense and they're going to address any conflicts as they have, because if they just did the sewer, they're going to not pay any attention to what water has, so it's, if we have any intention of doing the water, we should do it all at the same time.
Yeah.
You know, the ARPA funds are there, we can certainly use it, it's water and wastewater capital, that's the simplest thing, it's not our money, it's government money that we got for free, so if you wanted to designate that for ARPA funds, you could do that, if you wanted to use our capital reserve account, we have, I believe, over a million dollars in it, so we could fund it out, it's just your designation.
Well, at least in my motion...
Just our general budget, no, I do not have $1,000 build-in with the rate increase to fund it out of the general budget.
I want to be clear, and the motion does not specify, I mean, I will let you all come back to us, I'm presuming that we will have time, by the time you all work through this and legal works through this and you go to contract, before we get invoiced for the first time, we'll have time to work from which pot it's going to come from.
So I, I'm not going to authorize those and sign them until we understand which pot it's going to come from, I guess, for 11 through 14.
So why do we vote on it if you something else? You can't.
Well, we could save reserve now.
I'm sorry, what?
From their reserve fund.
I would say it comes from the water capital fund at this stage and if, if you or Mr. McCarthy would like to propose something different later, that's fine.
Fine with that.
All right. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other concerns?
I think that was it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, while Mr. Barber's there, since he broached the whole bullet train deal, pipe bursting, whatever, it's right up there with a bullet train in my mind. I would just make sure that since we've already paid our consultant tens of thousands of dollars, that we get on his rump and make sure that he is pressuring the appropriate people to get this done, you know?
Yes, sir. While we're still on this sewer project, I just want to give everybody the update. As they get out in the field and start doing surveying, now's the time when we're going to have to do the work to notify property owners, and it's going to be quite a big push. So the surveyors will probably be out on property trying to find cleanouts of where your existing septic tank is, that sort of thing. So I'm trying to, to do that work and get it timed so that we've notified people as best we can. That's kind of the stage where we're at. And then that will start the information campaign of letting everybody know which properties are being in consideration. And we'll try to get ahold of people as best we can. Granted, all we have is addresses from property appraiser site, so I guess the media guy's not here. If you get a letter from us, you're most likely going to be asking for your contact information. So we're going to have to start contacting property owners.
Should we put a flyer in the utility bill, in the water bill?
I think we're going to do-
Out in an envelope?
Yeah.
We should be able to put a flyer in there.
Yeah, to, to folks who are-
Currently on our system.
Yeah.
But most of these folks are not on our system.
A lot of them are not, and they're out in the county. So I don't have phone numbers or emails for them. All I'm going to be able to do is look up their mailing address off the property appraiser site.
Sure.
Which is a task in itself. But we're going to start that campaign and try to get some better information on the website so that we inform the public who is actually in this project area and what to expect.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we voted. You voted.
Eva, did we vote?
Forgot already.
You did.
We did, okay.
I forgot.
Okay.
You didn't have to vote this time.
Last thing on, on the agenda is the American Legion.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, the, well, the town council, this has been worked out. It's back on the agenda because town council asked me to bring the details back to, back to council. And everything's worked out. It's, by understanding, they're not scrolling anymore per code. Our code enforcement officer is watching out for it. And we'll be, and I've talked to, to Bert about this also, probably in the future, maybe in a couple, maybe next council meeting or so, we'll be coming back to council with maybe some discussions of modifying the changing boards, you're thinking, for not only for them, but for wells and several other places around.
I, I ask this to come back to the council because I want to put this issue to bed.
Not for this issue. This, this one's done.
This one, this issue is absolutely done. The Legion knows what they can and cannot do with their sign. If we decide in the future that we want to address the sign ordinance that we have in our town, that is a separate issue. But this issue, as far as the Legion sign, is, is completed and, and everybody is satisfactory with the outcome, they are not going to come back and ask for any further variance. We're all good to go. Done.
Okay, okay. Speaking from code enforcement, I mean, some of the signs were historically drafted in. And it's kind of difficult to go down the road and there's, this one's blinking and that, that one's not allowed to and, and so.
We know there've been exceptions. But there's always exceptions. Anytime you have an ordinance like that, or anytime you have a town, there's always exceptions, or there are signs that are grandfathered in or, or something to that effect. And I don't think we're going to be comparing apples to apples. But if, if in the future the sign ordinance comes up, then that's something that we have to address, but not at this time.
Okay. Anything to add on that, James?
Okay. That's it.
All right, we have a couple of people here from the audience. Any other comments? Appreciate the Historical Society being here tonight. Thank you for setting me straight.
Mr. Mayor, before Ms. Salz gets out of here. If I might.
Nice try.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know whether others are, are, are aware, but the county, the county is looking, is getting ready to put together a committee that is going to be looking at amongst other things, how to fund future infrastructure projects, primarily transportation, but other things. And they will make a recommendation to the county commission. And Leah, please correct me when I misspeak, about, you know, should we reconsider impact fees? Should there be MSBUs, MSTUs? I mean, or, or, you know, should there be special benefit districts? Should we just raise the county millage, a couple mills? What, what should we do to do that? And I know that, are you all still, and they have, they're looking for people within five or six different categories. And I know they've had a number of applicants already. And, and one of the categories was not, they weren't seeking input from the municipalities on that committee. But is, can, can folks still, if they wanted to try to get involved, is that still open? Or can you tell us where, where that's all going to go?
Sure. So Leah Salz, Development Director for the county. As of right now, the committee is still open. There's been no applications for the banking representation or representation for the banking community. So someone who either works in banking, is a board of trustees, something along those lines, that selection is still, still open and available. We hope to bring an item before the, the board at the next meeting in September, if not at that meeting, the following meeting, depending on the type of applications that we get. But you're correct, we're talking primarily first about impact fees and whether or not those should be re-implemented and to what degree, and how does that work, and how would we work with the school board, those types of things. And then from there, MSBUs and other types of ways to fund certain growth needs in the community and how, how do you go about that. Impact fees may not be the appropriate avenue for things such as parks and libraries, but maybe a $5 MSBU or those types of things. So those are the types of conversations we're hoping that the committee will vet out and then make that recommendation to the board of county commissioners. Yes, sir.
Do you expect this committee to address road maintenance in the towns?
Sherry and I've-
For county owned, or for county, for county roads, I would imagine. Is that what you mean, or?
There've been discussions about trying to have the cities take over maintenance of roads within the city. Is this the vehicle?
No, this would not be the committee for that. It would be how to fund growth related. So if it's already a road that's established, I don't, that's not a road that we would necessarily be discussing. It would be like intersections, if you have new development coming in, roads that surround that, how impact fees, or if it is the tool that is needed at this stage, or possibly it isn't. Maybe it's a additional line item out of the general fund or those types of things. But we know we're experiencing growth. We know we have to address it. And what is the best avenue to do that? And then this board will be making that recommendation. While there is not a specific municipal seat, the meetings are open to everyone. And I've tried to encourage, even if you are not a part of those that will be recommending to the board, that input will still be very valuable and will be heard. And I hope if anyone is available, they will come. They will be the last Tuesday of the month at 2:30 in the engineering training room. And we can get you guys and send you more information. But it's pretty critical to where we're going in our community and how we develop. So anyone with input or interest would, would be very much welcomed.
Well, I know maybe you'll have one more meeting, but again, thank you. I'm sorry we made you and Melanie stay till 8 o'clock for nothing. Other than I know you were certainly mentally entertained by all of it.
It was entertaining. I, you know, I wish there was popcorn at all these meetings. Maybe, maybe in the future. Thank you, guys.
Thank you both for your work in planning for Lake Placid.
Yes.
Over time.
And hopefully, we will be back.
And you're still welcome to come down every meeting if you want to.
It's on my way home.
Is today your last meeting, actually?
Well, I have to be coming-
Something in October.
And we still have to finalize the interlokal with Sherry and how it will go. And so we'll figure it out.
Okay.
You need to come back to us.
Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I have an output for you tomorrow.
All right, I'll go. Go to the department heads. Anybody have anything they want to bring before council? Everything okay? Okay. Ms. Nell?
I'm good.
You're good. Ray?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. Charlie?
Good.
Greg?
At the risk of dragging this on, I was asked about the striping, the parking lines on North Main Street. Has, it came up a few meetings ago. The lines are fading in front of some of the businesses. And they asked me, when I was asking about this whole flea market situation, where we were on the painting on the roads. Has, has, well, the parking spots are the town's parking spots, aren't they? On Main Street, North Main?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, the parking stripes are ours to do. Actually, tomorrow morning, we're adding a couple more curb stops in front of Skuny's area. About six more was all we had. But as far as the striping itself, we, it's just our kind of busy season with mowing right now. We don't have a lot of time with external projects. But I mean-
Maybe in the fall, I could tell them before the end of the year.
Yeah, I'm, I'll take a, a second look to see how, how terrible they are. If they're completely erased, then I would, I would put a, you know, stop to mow them for a while and, and make that a priority.
Particularly along Peace Land, the, that area, that building, those two buildings connect there. They, they get a lot of traffic, the people going to that little restaurant and grocery store, taqueria, whatever it is.
Typically, when we re-stripe, we want to do a lot at once because of what a pain it is to set up the machine and get everything going. So we try to do large areas when we do stripe. And, and then probably within the next month, the grass should start slowing down a little bit and we'll, we'll start more projects.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have something. I had an individual from the Presbyterian Church called me today and wanted to look into the possibility of a speed table on Oak Avenue, kind of near the Presbyterian Church. They've had issues with people just flying across through there. And it seems, according to them, I haven't seen it, but they've had issues in there with people going too fast at certain times. So I just thought I'd bring that up for discussion down the road.
And I was also called, and I would agree that that might be a, something to consider in the near future. I love the speed table on my road. It's the best thing that ever happened on my street.
I only hit it fast one time.
It only takes once, yes. I picked up a couple of shovels that flew out of people's trucks. Kind of nice.
Phil? Mr. Attorney?
Not a word, thank you.
Not a word, okay. Only thing I got is, I want to thank Phil. I see you're still on the air. I've had a lot of residents come in and say they really enjoy going on YouTube and watching this from the comfort of their home. But, so, I mean, the streaming of it's beautiful. Did a hell of a job. Thank you. I, I think we're getting a lot more people involved, or at least they're, at least they're watching what's going on. They may not be getting involved, but hopefully they will.
Sadly for them, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out too, that Mr. Williams has now 48 years of continuous public service. Is that correct? I think we should at least make note of that milestone.
Yes. Thank you for your, all your many years of service, Phil.
41 of it with Lake Placid.
All right, so any other business come before council? Meeting adjourned.
Greg? These are for your wife.
Kim, Kim would love that, yes. You'd be considered a traitor if you walk around with those, wouldn't you?
I can't, you're so, no, I'm not allowed.
Be talking longer, I'd go on the way.